Okay, welcome everyone. I do hereby call this May City Council meeting to order and ask for a roll call please. Okay, welcome everyone. I do hereby call this May City Council meeting to order and ask for a roll call please.
Councilmember Kevin Reed.
Here.
President Jim Harrieton.
Here.
Mayor Pat Sider.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Humble.
Here.
Councilmember Doctor David Wall.
Here.
Great, thank you. I would ask everybody to rise for the pleas of allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Maybe see it? Uh, approval of the agenda is next on the agenda. Anything changing from staff, Joe?
Sir.
Anything from council? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I may have approved the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comments. Before we get to that, we want to talk about the Boy Scouts. So, who's gonna speak about that? What did you guys do? I need somebody. Come on up, come on up. Yeah, hi.
My name is Emma White. I'm the Espial of Trip 1450. And a couple weeks ago, someone told us of a guy's yard in Mays, and we said that we'd clean it up. So we went and we cleaned up a bunch of brush, trees, trash in his yard, and altogether, I think we did forty hours of service. We filled the guy's ditch up with his brush, and then you guys came and picked it up.
Well, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Wow. That is what service is all about.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Um, anything from staff, Public Works or? We got a little certificate here, yeah? You get to say something too.
This is me on the spot.
No pressure.
Okay, what am I supposed to say? Oh, hi, my name is Jonathan White. I'm the Scoutmaster for these amazing girls.
I think we've met before, haven't we?
We have. You gave us your hot dog card.
Yeah. Ten no longer have.
What would you like?
I think what we need to do is take a group photo is what we do.
They would love to do that.
Get everybody to come up here. Of course, as a mayor and a politician, I need to be involved in it.
Oh, of course, of course, naturally. This is a great opportunity.
It is.
We meet in North Mays to recruit.
Yes, thank you. That's a great thing that you guys have all done. Proud of yourselves. We get the city council up here too. Let's get everybody. Yeah, let's do it all. Clarion, sir. We'll get some, we'll get some, uh, get this back. Come on.
Switch with Emma.
First off, let's do this. The young man at the back there, I think he's not coming. He's here for support. Oh.
He's working on a different merit badge.
Congratulations. And then we'll all get in here in the back and we'll get some photos of you guys. All right, I'm too small. There we go. The city council with you guys, you can very proud of yourself. Everybody give him a hand.
Now that I've had it tight, these, these girls did this, like, without any thought, so the city asked us to, and they made me super proud. They all showed up, didn't ask questions, there was no complaints. Adults that are back there also alike, lots of, and we enjoy community service. So, we need help, we are, we're always here.
Thank you.
We're always here, so, and they loved it.
Nice to know, we can count on you guys.
Yes, we appreciate it. Thanks very much. You're leaving.
All right.
Something to say. Some are working on the merit badge, but they need a government meeting.
Okay, that was the fun part. We got some people gotta stick around a little bit, so we'll wait for them to get organized. So, we're, uh, we're gonna continue on with public comments. We have Terry, can't pronounce the last name, sorry. Toomey, come on up. Terry, you wanna talk about this entrance on Wilkinson? It's not gonna happen? I don't know how rumors get spread, but go ahead.
That's pretty much what my purpose is working here.
Great.
To voice my opposition to adding driveway on the road. So we just feel that, that community pool that's gonna be put right across the street, that's just created danger.
You think that pool will ever get built?
Yes.
That was directed towards you. I saw you at Halloween. I saw you swimming. Yeah, no, I believe, I mean, it's not done, 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 but I believe that it's, it's our opinion that the entrance is gonna be on Mays Road. Wilkinson, quite frankly, that's private property right there, and they would have to purchase that from whoever owns that, or even try to make that happen, if that makes sense. And I don't, I, Joe, if you wanna talk to it from staff point of view.
Yes, sir. So we did meet with the applicant for that property, and we did review a preliminary plat. Preliminary plat had no entrance onto Wilkinson. Although discussion was had about changing up the entrance, the area over there along Wilkinson belongs to the HOA. So the HOA would have to sell that property to the developer for that to happen. So at this point, we haven't seen a final plat, and when we expect when it comes back, that it will show a single entrance on Mays Road considerably, uh, north of the Wilkinson driveway.
There's that. Also, I would, I would highly recommend if you're, if you're wanting to discuss with the planning commission, the screening that may be between the two properties as far as, you know, fencing and stuff like that, you might wanna stick around for, when that, when that happens with our planning commission. Because if that's, for some of you, maybe contentious, I don't know. We think it's a great opportunity for that, for that parcel of land, because it could have been a gas station or something with lights and twenty-four seven kinda thing, or it could have been an Atwoods or something else. So we, we think it's perfect for your neighborhood, is our opinion.
Yeah, we have no objection to this.
Okay. And I, I get a.
With the entrance.
Yeah, we don't know how that got, we don't know how that got started, but all of a sudden, we started getting letters, so, you know, we, we had meetings today and discussed it, and so.
Go through to pass it on.
Please, please get the, get the letter thing going.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Just so you know, Mayor, we didn't pass that concern on to the developer too, just so he knows that Wilkinson is a non-issue.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay and watch the rest. It's really exciting. Uh, so with no more, I don't have any additional comments, so I'm gonna, Sue, I will give that to you here in a bit. Uh, item number six on the agenda is a proclamation, which I'm gonna read, uh, real quick. This is National Public Works Week Proclamation. Whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Mays, Kansas. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals, and they are professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, wastewater, solid waste systems, public work buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Mays to gain knowledge and of, and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works, and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. It now resolve that I, Patrick Stivers, Mayor of the City of Mays, Kansas, do hereby designate the week of May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, May eighteen through twenty, through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. And I also urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association, the government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our Public Works Professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Thank you. You know, I'm, for those of you that know me, I'm kind of in that industry, so to speak, and I've always said, and Nick, Nick knows this. One of our, if not the most important assets is our, is our infrastructure. It cannot be replaced. So the streets, if they don't, if they're not kept up properly, we can't afford to fix them properly. We've got water, sewer, we've got, you know, sexy stuff, as you like to say, a water tower, is all of our water, all the stuff that we all take for granted, it's Nick and his crew that do those things, and we really appreciate everything that you guys do. Thank you very much. And I will see you Thursday. Right, thank you very much. Thank you. Very important thing for the City of Mays, and it's, you know, citizens see you guys out there working, and it just gets done. So it's, uh, it's their tax dollar work, and you, you and I both understand, we work for them. Okay, with that, unless anybody else has anything they wanna say. Gonna move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda.
I would, ma'am, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I got a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight A. We've got some GO bonds, twenty twenty-five A proposed special assessment. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So GO bond series twenty twenty-five A, the city has completed improvements related to the following projects: The Cove's paving, Villas at Hampton Lake regarding paving, sanitary sewer, water, stormwater drainage, Cypress Point second addition, paving, sanitary sewer, water, stormwater draining, Woodard addition phase three, paving and water, Academy Avenue, fifty-third street water line, and one hundred and ninth street sewer line. If you have any questions regarding this, we actually have Larry, our financial advisor here today, willing to answer any questions. And clearly, we're moving this to permit financing. I kinda miss that, so.
For those of you in the audience that own a home in Kansas, they kinda do things different than anywhere else I've lived, and that they assess specials. When you buy a house, not only you have the house payment, you're paying for the street, the sewer, and all that other stuff, which is separate. And normally, I think when I started, it was ten to fifteen years, and now it's twenty years, because the price just keeps going up. I, I know I just bought a new house, and my specials are probably thirty percent higher than three years ago, so, um, yeah, it's great. So that's what we're doing today, is we're just doing some business to hopefully, if, if the city council still desires to approve this. Any questions from staff? Any questions from council, I mean, sorry.
Just a curious question. What is the interest rate on this? And also, since we, I think Nick last time mentioned, uh, we do feel the threat from the federal, if they kind of exempt the, you know, exact tax exemption from the interest, you know, if that happened, what will be the impact to the series? I just want to give a note on that.
Yeah, I mean, cities, you guys have issued tax exempt bonds for, for decades and decades, and, and that allows you to get a better interest rate, um, because people that buy your bonds, when they get the interest from you, they don't pay taxes on it, and so you get the benefit of that with a lower interest rate. And so, yeah, if you're asking about Congress, if they decide to go ahead and impose, re-impose, or remove the tax exemption, that would correspond with a higher interest rate for you guys. Right now, we're looking at maybe three and a half to four percent, and that could add another percent, getting up to four and a half or five percent, or even more, uh, if they were to impose. Fortunately, it sounds like so far, it's been avoided in the latest iterations of legislation floating around, so, um, hopefully, that continues, and the tax exemption continues. Was there another question? I forget.
I just, just wanted to make a note on that, so that, so that we know, if that happened, what is the, um, cost increase for the local government?
Yeah, so it's, probably another percent or one and a half percent, you know, on, um, which I can't do the math right off the top of my head, but yeah, if you're doing a million in, in bonds, I mean, you're talking ten thousand, fifteen thousand, um, per year, and you're talking maybe a ten million dollar bond here, so it's just compounds when you have that tax exemption removed.
Thank you.
Ultimately, that gets passed on to the consumer.
It does.
The homeowner in this case.
Right, right.
And so, it's a tax, is what it is.
Right.
Basically, so, you guys should make sure your elected people know that, on a state level, or higher, on a federal level, so. Any other questions from council?
Mister Mayor, I would make a motion to, one, approve each of said documents for twenty twenty-five A GO bond, exhibit A, B, C, and D. Two, schedule a public hearing on June sixteenth. Three, publish the notice of public hearing. Four, mail the notice to each property owner. And five, make the same available for public inspection.
I will second.
I got a motion and a second to, number one, approve each of said documents for twenty twenty-five A GO bond, exhibit A, B, C, and D. Two, to schedule a public hearing on June sixteenth. And three, to publish a notice of public hearing. Four, to mail the notice to each property owner. And five, make the same available for public inspection. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is in boy, twenty twenty-four audit presentation. Ah, we have somebody. Virchel. Let's go. Go, you want, go ahead. She's gonna introduce you. Great.
This is April from Barney and Associates. Barney and Associates has been doing our audit for the past three years, and she's just gonna come here and show you your findings from twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. Somebody over there. So April's worked among the partners of Barney and Associates. I'm not sure if we can get the camera turned back around where I can see you guys or not.
He wants to see us.
Working on it.
Working on it. Technical glitch.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
Awesome.
I apologize for not being there in person. I think, and April's warning, she just had me a little spooked today, I'm not sure why, but normally in Kansas, we would expect that, but we decided maybe to do this to do it for both. I do believe you have in your package, talking of the communication letter, as well as the audit financials. I will attempt to, if you'd like me to share them on the screen, I'm going to attempt. Can you see the letter?
Yes.
All right, okay. All right, so let's go through the governance letter first. As you know, we work with your administration and staff to perform the audit. This year was unusual. We, we actually worked with Kelly before she left, she unloaded probably ninety-nine percent of the information that we needed, and then onsite, we worked with Nick and Joe, Joe helped us quite a bit, and then the rest of the staff as well. So, um, we both have to work before we come onsite, and then we come onsite and wrap up what we need to do in person. But almost we've worked with the management team directly for you, and so this governance letter is required communication from the audit firm to you. This letter would include any issues or concerns that we had, internal control type issues, compliance issues, statute violations. We had none of those, but this is a clean letter. In addition, if we had recommended any journal entries that would need to be posted due to errors that we found, it would also be included in that. A procedural adjustment, so the numbers in your financial statement that you received are the same numbers that Kelly would have presented to you as of year end. No changes to the financial number. So the letter again, as I said, it's a clean letter. Are there any questions? Don't move left.
No.
No.
All right, now I'm gonna grab the financial statement. I can grab it here. Okay, can you see the financial statement? All right, so we're gonna look at the audit report, and I'll say this one. So again, your city reports under the PIBAD regulatory basis, so the first two paragraphs say adverse opinion, that's in relation to GAAP. So that has to be there, but the third paragraph is going to say your clean or unmodified opinion for the City of Mays, um, for the year of twenty twenty-four. Then as we scroll in the report, this is chapter one. So this is the financial statement for the City of Mays. There are a lot of things, like all the funds that you've used to report the activity during the year. We show receipt of expenditures by fund, any unencumbered cash balances that will be used for budgeting purposes. We add back any outstanding accounts payable or encumbers that you have reconciled, book balances that period income are there on the far right-hand side. If you look down to the bottom, you can see the city has twenty-four guns, and six hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars, and the global balance is in a money market account, and then there was a balance in seventy and a small amount in two years. Um, all the funds into positive balance, which is great. Then we're going to scroll on through the next several pages of the financial statement. Our equipment, and our requires, they're, you know, they help you understand the financial statement, and they help readers understand. They cover a myriad of things, including the bases of the account we follow, uh, the regulatory rules that we follow, under the kind of ten and through the E. I said you'll put them on deposits and investments. Part of the audit, what we do is not only confirm in your GAAP, but we also make sure you have adequate pledging in place at the bank. As you know, FDIC covers a portion of your balance that you frank, but it has securities pledged, so we test that as well. Rolling on through the notes, we're gonna skip some of this. We're gonna go to the debt. This is the changes in your long-term debt to the City of Mays. You can see there were two new additions this year. You issued a twenty twenty-four A series bond of fifteen million nine five thousand dollars. Also, added through your engagement revolving loan, about sixty-six thousand, and you issued a twenty twenty-four ten notes for ten million six hundred and eighty thousand. You did retire two ten notes, twenty-one and twenty-two ten notes, were retired during the year. So on that far right-hand column, you see that the total, this is paid for the year by the city, was one million eight sixty-three seven ninety on all debt issues of the city. And then if you back over two, uh, two columns over, you can see that your principal payments were six million thirty-five thousand four ninety-three. Uh, the next page, you can see the payout of that debt, uh, for five years individually, and then in buckets of five years, uh, following that. And we move into, this is the page that gives you your compliance with the budget law. So although you have more funds than this, you have funds that you have under budgeted. But you can see the far right-hand column, they're all in brackets, from under budgeted in all of your funds. Then beginning with the next page, we start with one page per fund. So for all of those, if this is a thing, you're gonna get a page back here for each fund. It gives you more detailed information on your revenues and expenditures for those funds. So when you're looking at general funds, and then I won't look into individual funds, but I'll kinda sure to have them laid out. So your actual receipt of expenditures, your budgeted receipt of expenditures, and then any year over and up. So you can see you took in seven point four million dollars individual funds. You only budgeted fifteen point five million. And we do expect that, because when you budget, you generally budget conservatively on the revenue side. And then down below, you can see that your expenditures for the year were six million one thirty-three, and you budgeted all of them. And you were under budgeted one point eight million in that general fund. And then the rest of the pages are just individual funds of the city. When you get to a fund that is not a budgeted fund, when you're just gonna scroll through, that's what it will look like. There is no budget for that fund, so you only receive the current year's transact. Are there any questions?
Uh, just, uh, on that page fourteen, I do see there's a cash reserve budgeted one point nine million, but there's no extra there.
Yeah, so, wait, you budgeted over more than one, that cash reserve line? So essentially, when you look at your budget document, there's a spot on there where you can plug in an amount and use the room in case of something unexpected. So that's the amount that you budgeted, but you did not have to utilize it during twenty twenty-four, so there were no expenditures that went against that. Um, we presented there so that your total budget ties with your total budget that you publiced. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. Not all cities use that line, not all cities use the cash reserve line, but we do have several cities and counties that do use it. Any other questions? All right, well, it's like working with your city. I knew Nick actually from years ago, and I used to audit Grayman, and he was at the city of Grayman, and so it was nice to have a familiar face that came in. So we do appreciate your work, and if you have any questions, if you think of something later that you forget to ask, feel free to ask the desk provider or your manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So unless there's anything for staff, if anybody wants to make a recommendation, receive and file, I'd appreciate it.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to receive and file the financial statement of the City of Mays Financial Reporting Equity, Kansas for the year ending December 31st, 2024, and the Mays Public Building Commission Summary Financial Information for the year ending December 31st, 2024. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number C is the water tower. Hi, Nick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, over the last several years, on numerous occasions, we've brought, we've talked, we've talked about and brought up the need for an additional water tower. As our city grows, so does the demand for our public water supply. And with that, tonight, I'm bringing to you a recommendation for your consideration of proposal to design that new water tower. So on March 3rd, we advertised requests for proposals to 12 different firms, and on April 7th, we received proposals from three firms, including Garver, PEC, and Barletton West. A selection committee that consisted of staff and a couple of council members, we each sat down on April 10th and reviewed those proposals altogether. And then on May 1st, we conducted interviews here at City Hall. I thought that it was important in this process to kind of nail down on technical expertise on who is actually going to be doing the water tower design. So as opposed to doing a traditional PowerPoint presentation from the firms, we set up a process where we actually did more of a panel interview that consisted of staff and a council member as well. We did that on May 1st, and then after conducting those interviews, we had some discussions here among city leadership, city leadership and our public works team. And with that, we're recommending to move forward with PEC to design the water tower. We had great proposals from each of the three firms. We felt like PEC stood out in several different ways. They brought up several examples that they've come across in the past that where they've found issues and they've found ways to address those issues in their design process to ensure that we don't come across those issues in the future. As you know, it's pretty obvious, none of our city leadership has been through constructing a new water tower, so they're using a construction inspection approach to actually use a third-party inspection firm to do some of their welding and coating inspections. And that firm's sole focus is water towers and tank storage. They included in their proposal, and we discussed in the interview, a couple of other unique features, such as actually inspecting the, some of the metals and weldings and building of the actual parts at the fabrication facility before it's even shipped to the site to be built. So that third-party engineering firm would be doing some of those inspections. The designated project manager for PEC kind of stood out. He had a lot of new tower construction experience as opposed to some of the other project managers. And then on the technical piece, I enjoyed some of the, some of the areas where they elaborated on, some of the technical design pieces that go into the tower, such as the geotechnical. I also spoke with several, with two references that highlighted Ryan Glessner, the PEC project manager's professionalism and experience as being excellent. The, from a budget perspective, you can kind of see there in front of you how the three different firms proposed their fees. And then with that, the design fee is kind of a set number. And then given the, we have a 24, anticipated 24-week lead, 24-week design timeframe that we're thinking, so it's a little bit of a lengthy process. So when we get to that, closer to the end of design, we'll have a much better idea of where contractors are in their schedules, and we can nail down a better timeframe for our construction observation to narrow that, narrow that fee in. And then from a funding perspective, we've applied for grants to the state water office and have yet to be successful, and we're also applying for state revolving fund loans through K, through the KDAHE. So with that, I just want to introduce Ryan real quick. We've done a lot of work with PEC, but I don't think we've ever worked with Ryan, so I just wanted him to introduce himself and just give a quick 30,000-foot view of his, of his expertise doing water tower work. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Nick. Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to present to the city for this project. My name's Ryan Glessner with Professional Engineering Consultants. I'm our VP of Municipal and Water Waste Water Engineering. Our division is focused on literally everything sewer and water related, from the, from the treatment side to the distribution, to the collection, to the storage, the pumping. That is what we do. That's what we specialize in. And as Nick mentioned, as far as my experience, I've got 17 years as a, experience as a professional engineer. And one of the very first projects I did as a young engineer, as soon as, or right when I got my license, was a water tower project. You may be familiar with it, it's the one down in Mulvane, between the city and the casino. And ever since then, ever since that design process that I went through, I mean, water towers have always intrigued me. They're from the hydraulic modeling and the evaluation of the distribution system to figure out how, you know, what size the tower needs to be, what height it needs to be, what geometry, all of the pieces that go into that, and how it's going to interact with your existing tower, and it's going to interact with your existing pumps, and just the existing infrastructure has always been fascinating to me. And it's still one of those projects to this day, the first project I ever signed and sealed as a professional engineer, and I can still point to it and show everybody I know that, hey, this is my project, this is, this is, this is pretty cool. And so it's just kind of expanded from there in the 17 years. Multiple water towers, new water towers, water tower evaluations that have done rehabilitation, required rehabilitation and some steelwork and just the, you know, the long-term maintenance of the tower is, is paramount for the city's water system operation. And as you guys mentioned earlier with the Public Works Appreciation Week, and making sure that all of, you know, Nick maintains all of the assets, you know, we're going to evaluate, we're going to evaluate all of the tank options based off of the size that's proposed, and identify the best long-term option for the city, because it is a, it is a huge, is a huge asset, is an expensive asset, and it needs to be sized correctly, and it needs to operate in the long term, just to make sure that, you know, you guys are making that investment and you get, you know, what you're expecting out of it for the long term. So we're looking forward to the project. We, we really appreciate the opportunity to present, and we really enjoyed the interview process. It was something we don't really do every day. Normally, we're up giving you your normal PowerPoint presentation and outlining some of our projects, but we really like getting into the weeds and answering the questions and given the opportunity to show kind of our, our technical background and expertise. Because in addition to my, you know, my 17 years of experience, PEC as a whole has 60 years of experience doing, doing, you know, significantly more water towers. And we've got, we've got people on staff that have been doing water towers for 35 years, so they're always available as a, as a resource and a, you know, another person to bounce some ideas off of. So like I said, we really appreciate the opportunity, and I'd be willing to answer any questions you guys may have.
Well, your, your proposal, your design, will it also include recommended maintenance post-construction and, and maybe help with capital planning too? Is that something that you guys provide as part of that service?
Yes, we can, we can definitely outline that and provide those recommendations. The first thing that's associated with a new tower is immediately, right off the bat, we'll have a two-year warranty on it with a two-year warranty inspection at the end of that two years, just to make sure that after two years of operations, we get the contractor back in there, and we identify any potential concerns very early on in the process, so we can get them addressed and make sure that they're not going to be long-term issues. And then from there, from there, it's, it's really, you know, we recommend anywhere from, from two to five years for a regular tank inspection. The newer tanks, you can usually go a little bit longer, four or five-year range, but then as they get older and as, you know, the coating system starts to wear down, we recommend increase in the, the, how often you guys do that inspection, just to, just to make sure that, you know, there's no, no concerns. Because once, with the, with the steel and the coating systems, once you start seeing signs of deterioration, it starts to happen much quicker. I mean, it just happens faster and faster and faster the longer you don't take care of it and address it. So just keeping an eye on it, make sure that it's not going beyond, above and beyond where it should be is paramount.
Appreciate it.
How many gallons is this water tank?
The, the way the, the way the RFP was written and the way we proposed it was 750,000 gallons. We plan to utilize the city's existing hydraulic model and just run our own analysis and just cross-track that recommendation and, and make a recommendation ourselves and, and work with the city to, and work with Nick just to make sure that, that we're sizing adequately to where we're not making it too small for the long term, and we're not making it too big to have operational issues in the, in the short term.
What, what's our current tank capacity with the one we have?
Half a million.
So that's 500,000.
And I noted on the agenda item, but I meant to mention that Tom is still reviewing it as to form the agreement, just so you know.
I can't remember, where are we going to put this thing? Where's it?
So in between the newer Riley Building and west of Shuttle Aerospace.
Okay, so it's in the industrial park.
So almost directly across the street from the cemetery.
Do we have a preliminary budget for construction?
We're preliminarily thinking around eight to nine million for the tank. And given the, I mean, the market has been pretty volatile over the last couple of years. There is quite a bit of contingency built into that, so that's a pretty rough.
Depends on the tariff of the, of the week. So who does the work? Is it, is it local or is it an outside company that comes in, or who, who does the actual work?
Actual construction?
Yes.
It is, it is typically somebody from out of state. There's, it ultimately depends on the type of tower that's selected, and you'll get a, a range of contractors, but there's, there's roughly five to seven tank contractors that specialize just in tank construction. But there's only, there's only one, one local one out of Kansas that, that I'm aware of, and they, they kind of focus on some of the smaller towers. I don't know if they'll be, I don't know if they'll be up to this size.
Are we going to do the concrete slip forms on the base of the water tower? That's always pretty cool to see.
Yeah, yeah. So just, again, we'll, we'll run the analysis and cost evaluation, but, but that's, that's kind of the direction. I think we anticipate the tower going, have the composite-style tank with the concrete slip forms where you're jumping it up all the way to the top, pouring, pouring a different section every single day, so.
It's definitely a generational-type project, so it's, it's kind of exciting to get to do something like this.
Once construction starts on something like this, how long does it generally take? I don't want to hold you to six months or?
Yeah, it's, it's usually, it's usually a long process. So the, our, our estimate is typically somewhere around 16 months.
Okay.
So over a year. But, you know, we were mentioning to Nick in the interview process, there's, there's a balance there to where if there's, if there's a need and it's, you know, it's a pressing item, you can, you can make that timeline much shorter, but it typically costs more for the, for the contractor. So they can, they can, they can do a tower like this in 10 to 12 months probably, but it will, it will likely be more expensive than if you give them kind of that 16 to potentially 18-month timeframe.
I think we're pretty well ahead of the game, so that that doesn't have to be an issue, right?
I think when I, when I reviewed PEC's timeline, I think tentatively I was hoping to maybe have, have it done before the summer demand of '27.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? Good? Thanks.
I would.
Put forward the work, won't you?
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the contract with PEC to perform and design the construction administrative fees and services for the new water tower with a not-to-exceed amount of $185,000 and a range of $350,000 to $425,000 for the construction inspection and authorize the mayor to sign. Did, I needed to have in there, approved to form? Yeah, I need to subject, subject to the attorney, city attorney's approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the contract with PEC to perform design and construction administrative services for a new water tower with a not-to-exceed amount for design of $185,000 and a range of $350,000 to $425,000 for construction inspection and authorize the mayor to sign subject to council. City attorney. Yes, what you said.
City attorney's approval.
City attorney's approval for me. Yeah, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, moving on. P and R, second addition.
Okay, so it looks like this project may finally happen. We, we borrowed engineering funds for this back in 2022, and we finally got around to the construction side of it. So in November of 2024, council accepted petitions and the amending resolutions for entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main, stormwater sewer, and stormwater drainage. On April 15th of this year, bids were opened with Noak Construction being the low bidder. Above improvements, with exception of stormwater sewer and storm drain, exceeded the engineer's estimate. Estimate was $2,471,686.75. Low bid was $2,872,360.10. Due to the high bids, city agreed to the engineer reworking the design of certain improvements to identify possible savings that could lower the eventual cost of special assessments associated with these improvements. Public Works Director Vestering reviewed proposed design changes and approved them. A revised bid document from the low bidder was submitted with the developer agreeing to pay $200,000 of the improvements upfront to avoid levying the full amount of the improvement district. Revised low bid from Noak is now $2,682,289.10. P and R's second addition improvements are being funded with a 2025 A temp note proceeds. Bond Council has reviewed the petitions and prepared the attached reauthorization resolutions for P and R's second additions for the improvements. Recommendation is to accept the repetitions for the P and R phase two improvements in the total amount of $3,214,000, which includes the engineering. Adopt the revised resolutions of advisability for P and R phase two, and accept the low bid from Noak Construction for P and R phase two second addition in the amount of $2,682,289.10. Can I stand for questions?
Questions from anybody?
And there is a plat map on this one. It's the last page of that, that agenda. If you wanted to see what that neighborhood is and where it's going to be across from the storage units on Mays Road.
And these were going to be, are these duplexes mostly?
Yes, those are going to be duplexes.
Was there anything?
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask what else besides duplexes? That's it?
They are leaving Frontage along Mays Road for commercial development. So there is, that's why they have the entrance improvements separately, because there's going to be a long entrance road.
So Joe, just to make sure I'm following this, the Reader's Digest version is they were over budget originally. They redesigned it, and then they received a bid that was about $200,000 less, and the developer also agreed to pay about $200,000 in addition.
He's paying that $200,000 to get back to that 2.4 million, which is what he believes that he can stomach for specials on the lots.
Even then, as I recall, they're going to be rather high, right?
Well, there, I know Larry's already gone, but the specials on those lots are going to average about $471 a month. Our financial advisor is telling me right now that specials on lots are averaging between 350 and 450 dollars a month across the city, across the metro area.
Great. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there's no other discussion, I would move to accept the repetitions for PNR phase two entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements in the total amount of $3,214,000. Number two, adopt the revised resolution of advisability for the PNR phase two entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements. Number three, accept the low bid from NOOC construction for PNR second addition entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements. Number three, accept the low bid from NOOC construction for PNR second addition entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements not to exceed $2,682,289.10.
I'll second, but I do have a quick question. Before we vote.
Does staff or Nick, do you agree that the revised design still falls in line with our city standards? Couple of the things that they adjusted from a design standpoint is the depth of the sanitary sewer. A lot of the elevated costs on this was groundwater, and so they've adjusted some of those depths to get it out of groundwater and then where they cross the future pavement for the streets, typically we use flowable fill to backflow those. They, we agreed to do either native or some other kind of backfill with compaction testing. And so that saves them a little bit of money as well. And so as long as they were doing the testing every two feet, I was okay with a different type of backfill.
So from a public works perspective, you're, you're good?
Yep.
It's not going to cause us any issues 20 years from now?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Any other questions? I'd like to think, those were great questions. I got a motion and a, and a second to accept the repetitions for PNR phase two entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements in the total amount of $3,214,000. And number two, to adopt the revised resolutions of advisability for the PNR phase two entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements and authorize the mayor to sign. And item three would be to accept the low bid from NOOC construction for PNR second addition water, entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drain improvements and authorize the mayor to sign. And item three would be to accept the low bid from NOOC construction for PNR second addition water, entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main and stormwater drainage improvements not to exceed $2,682,289.10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. PNR second addition construction contracts, continuation of what we just discussed.
Yes, so council, since you just approved the repetitions and the resolutions of advisability for NOOC construction for the aforementioned improvements, NOOC construction has submitted the attached construction contract in your packet in the amount of the $2,682,289.10. The bond and insurance documents will not attach, have been received and are sufficient. This is being funded with 2025A temp note proceeds. The city attorney has approved the contract as to form and we recommend the approval of the construction contract with NOOC construction.
Entertain motion on that?
I would move we approve the construction contract with NOOC construction for the installation of entrance water, phase one water distribution, phase one sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer main, stormwater drainage improvements in an amount not to exceed $2,682,289.10 and authorize the mayor to sign. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last item is a zoning. Zone number Z-01-025, southwest corner of West 45th and Maze Road.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is brought by, this case is brought to us by 4501 LLC. They request a rezoning of an SF5 zone, single-family residential area that's primarily used for agricultural use, the GEO general office, which fits within the, the use of the community, excuse me, comprehensive plan. It's going to be used for an independent living, an assisted living, a member care facility and 116-unit facility. This case was heard by the Maze Planning Commission on May 1st and where it passed unanimously. We recommend that proposals don't change, be appropriate, keep an maze comprehensive plan upon these factors, plus the information available prior to the public hearing. Staff represents the request be approved by the mayor.
How many, how many, what did you say? How many units?
116 units, preliminary.
And this is where we just discussed the driveway.
Yeah.
Any questions from anybody?
I guess I would just ask, since screening was brought up tonight, is there any specific screening requirements that would go with that zoning?
There are screening requirements, yes, sir. That'll be discussed when we get the preliminary plat or if they decide to do a one-step final plat, we'll go through that process and involve the neighbors on that as well.
That includes screening along the backside, not just along Maze Road, right?
Yes, correct, that's correct.
Throughout the whole property?
Throughout the whole property.
Correct.
And the, just to mention, as was discussed earlier, the entrance is going to be on Maze Road. That's what was brought to us in the, the sketch plan that was brought to us by 4501. There was no discussion of really any entrance on Wilkinson at all. I'm not sure how that got started, but that it was cut off.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the proposed zoning change. Hold on, I'm sorry.
These are, these are long paragraphs tonight.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this was written as a motion or, let's see here. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the proposed zone change and in keeping with the City of Maze comprehensive plan based on these factors, plus the information available prior to the public hearing. All right, I'm going to back up.
Understand.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the requested zoning change under file Z-01-025. Zoning of the southwest corner of West 45th Street North and Maze Road from single-family S5 to single-family residential, or single-family residential to GEO general office. Sorry, I butchered that.
Understand, that's, it's not written right. So we have a motion and a second to approve zoning number Z-01-025 of southwest, southwest corner of West, West 45th Street North and Maze Road from SF5, single-family residence to general office. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to reports, Mr. Police, Police Chief, how you doing?
Mayor, council, the only thing I want to note on the report is the statistics, they're saying that we have to.
Okay.
Thank you, I always forget about the button. Other than that, I have no additions to the, the report and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Again, we had some discussion, school's about to get out, the SRO officers, you're going to put them to work doing other things and you got a plan for that, I'm sure.
Yes, in fact, we'll have a couple of people attending SRO school, which will occur in June. We have both our 911 camps in June and then the SROs will be delegated out to alternate shifts to assist and patrol with alternate days off to add coverage to the weekends.
You want to talk to the group about the 911 camps, how long they are and are there any openings left or are they full?
I think Camp Two, we have a couple openings left. They're, they're four days long. Monday, we do a preparation day and then there, each day there's activities with different public service entities such as we take the kids out to the airports, so they see airport police and fire. WPD motor unit comes out, Wichita Police Mounted Unit comes out, and then we have some other fun activities for them as well. Take a field trip to Diamond Archery and various things.
Have a good time.
They have, they have.
How many are in class normally?
We're keeping the, the camps to 30 apiece. We, I think we have a couple of scholarships in each class because there is a fee. Local businesses help provide lunch and snacks throughout the day, but we, we have them from 8:30 in the morning until 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon, Tuesday through Friday, and the Monday is a preparation day for the camp.
How are you coming along on finding your assistant?
Last week, we had interviews with the law enforcement panel. This week, we'll have an interview panel with the three remaining applicants. It's a community and community partner panel, which may, is made up of various community partners that we have.
How many applicants are you interested in at this point? How many have you got it down to?
Three.
Just three, okay.
Three, one internal, two external.
Right. Oh, okay, okay. Any other questions? I'm asking all the questions, sorry. I want to talk to you afterwards.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Public Works.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Real quick, I just wanted to note, my first week, or my first year leading the Public Works Department, I just thought it was really important to highlight National Public Works Week and really exemplify the dedication our, our Public Works staff make to, make to providing the service to the citizens of Maze that, that we do. You know, through the, the bit of a rough winter that we had with the water main breaks and all the snow, I've just really been proud of our guys and grateful for their, grateful for their dedication and sticking to it, so. One other thing, we're planning to begin some of our Reclamite application next week, weather permitting, so you should be seeing some, some communication coming out from the city on our Facebook page regarding some of the construction. Typically on, on this type of a project with Reclamite sealed, they're in and out, those neighborhoods in, in a day, so. And if people need to get into their house at some point during the application, they can, they can accommodate that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
The barbecue is what time?
The barbecue is 11:30 Thursday.
11:30.
Hope to see you all there, if you can make it.
I'll be there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Planning zoning?
Mr. Mayor, council members, really, there's nothing more to add to our, other than we'll say that V02, 025 and V03, 025, I managed to get that worked out for the utilities easement and the homeowners have accepted what the, what's been proposed where it's a 20-foot centerline easement where 32nd, 32nd Street used to exist. So that's, that's, that'll go for the Planning Commission on June 5th. And then we have elections coming up for the, for the chair, the vice chair and the secretary on June 5th as well. We have, still have a full council or commission. I'll stand for any questions.
On Sweetwater over there, there's some areas of large growth on the lake lots. So there's a drainage ditch coming in and it's never cleaned very well and I don't think we're responsible for it. And I don't know if that falls under code enforcement or what. I don't know who's responsible, if it's the HOA, I mean, you're in that neighborhood. You know anything about that or can you talk to that or? Go ahead.
So that is the lot that we just re-zoned so that they could split it, they split the lot, right? He's talking about the lot around the curve?
That is correct.
Well, there's other lots besides that.
There's other lots.
That'll eventually then have a new house on it. Because it was that open land that was supposed to be, you're talking about on the other side of it, where there's two houses around it?
Yeah, there's a house on either side and there's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a area where it's no man's land and.
It's the overflow.
The HOA doesn't think it's their problem and we, for sure, it's not our problem because we only go to the curb, so.
So I actually.
It's just kind of an eyesore.
Actually just spoke with a resident of Sweetwater over there last week and, you know, we've got various complaints over the last couple of years, but I spoke with a resident there last week and I actually pulled the plat from, I think, 1986 or 1989 and the plat designates the Lake Owners Association as being responsible for drainage easements in the, in the lake, so I've, I've expressed that to that resident and he asked if we as a city could help in any way and I just, I was going to talk with the city manager about it, just haven't had an opportunity to yet this week, so.
I'm ahead of the game.
We're working on it, so we'll see what we can do.
It's much like the.
Sounds like you did help.
Well, we've done what we can, but we'll, we'll see what we can do to help him out.
Same circumstance, do we have any update on the WSU, out in front of WSU?
Same, same kind of circumstance, yeah. On the plat over there and carries crossing the whole pond and all the drainage easements are in one reserve and that reserve is noted as being responsible for the, like, the Lake Owners Association.
Quick question, I don't know if this is for Nick or Mitch, but on the vacation request, so it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, Sedgwick County Electric Co-op will maintain half of what's being vacated after it's vacated, right?
No, the homeowners will be responsible for maintaining that entire area. The easement will allow the.
Oh, that you're saying maintain as if they would just like to keep it?
Yes, they'll keep that easement. I could use a better choice of words.
Now I got you.
Yeah, they're going to keep that easement in case they need it.
Okay, so the property owners will still be responsible for maintenance? Okay, that's what I was curious about, thank you.
But it's halfway between, right? Halfway?
Yes, where 32nd Street used to be, there'll be a 20-foot centerline easement on that street and that's what the homeowners came to currents with on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal?
Thank you, sir.
Operations, Joe?
Nope.
Oh, oh, sorry. I apologize. You guys just surprise me every week.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Attached to your packets are your treasury report and then your cash and budget position as of April 30th. Just some things, we've been working on the past two weeks. We're looking into new purchase card companies on the past two weeks, one that will possibly help us with a workflow into our system. Right now, we just have credit cards, we don't have a true business purchase card and so just for an efficient standpoint, efficiency standpoint, just getting that going and hopefully connecting it into our system so we can have a workflow where if somebody slides their card, it goes directly into our system. That person adds the coating to it, then it goes for approval, then it goes out for payment. Kind of hoping to get that process. We've looked at UMB, Commerce and Peoples Bank and Trust. And then, do you guys have any questions on that before I move on to my next?
I have no affiliation with it, but we use Finvari at work and it's not tied to a bank, but it's great. We love it.
We use Divvy and it is, I, I love it because you don't have to fill out or read reports that does it all for you.
I think those two are very similar.
Yeah.
I think that challenge comes with Incode or Tyler Tech trying to find something that will work directly with them and so I'm getting the file that will match up with those, so those.
So those are why we picked those three, but I definitely will look into those two additional ones as well. The second thing I wanted to know is that currently our credit card company, our third party company, so when anybody slides a credit card, is Global Payments and we are looking at switching to Tyler Pay. I've gone through that process. And just overall, altogether, we will have an annual fee, but that's going to cover our PCI, our payment credit card or our purchase payment card industry, like your security on it. And right now, we're paying that individual each month instead of annually. And so that will cut down the cost drastically on that, so saving us some money there and then hoping just to be more efficient in what we're doing and how we're doing it. And then also on the backend for my side, within the two months that I've been here with Global Payments, things kind of get iffy on their other side with that three percent fee. And so this is just way more clear for my end and the ladies up front end, so. And other than that, I will stand for any additional questions.
Sounds great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, nothing more? You're good?
So I guess I'm going to do Nick's report for him tonight, so I think many of you are tracking that we are continuing ongoing discussions with our church about public sewer versus private. The timing may not be great for the city, however, we continue to explore options with them because we know that we're going to be, to be able to support future growth to the north and west of there at some point in the future. We are talking with a, a major national retailer that has an eye on an arterial corner in Maze. It may require some adjustments to some traffic control devices on the city's right of way, but we're working through that. Working with a new concept restaurant chain that has an initial franchise model in the metro area that has gone over very well. We're waiting for one of their executives to visit from out of state. We're looking at three parcels in Maze. Ricky and I continue to market Maze very aggressively to retail and commercial sector wherever and whenever we can. Cold calling is very effective, especially when you get no from the staff. You call the president, they pick up their phone. Staff will be attending the state budget conference on Wednesday. We're going to get our valuation numbers here in a few weeks and we'll be able to develop the manager's proposed budget. I want to thank all of you for your feedback recently at the workshop and thereafter to help us kind of get that process going. As part of budgeting, the next council meeting, you will see the proposed CIP ordinance that we talked about at the budget workshop, as well as a CIP book that will highlight the CIP plan for 2026 and beyond. Staff have been working behind the scenes and in the community on the sales tax initiative, as you well know. This will help with property taxes by diversifying funding streams. Sales tax is how we need to pay for roadway and mobility improvements in our community and hope that the community understands that. Next council meeting, we should have an update from Gravity Works on the project to create shade structures over at the amphitheater. I just got some renderings, some new renderings today, right before this meeting, and they, they look pretty, pretty good. I'm kind of waiting to see what your reaction is. Community events, so on your report, you'll see that there's a number of community events on there. Farm and Art American Season is underway. It's going well. Tristan and the Public Works team put a lot of work into these events. Please attend one if you get a chance. Concert series is listed. There's three concerts this summer and advertising plans are underway. We've got a couple of, of businesses here that have agreed to help us get that advertised. The Rec Commission of the city will sponsor a community block party on July third. It will end with a fireworks show. Should be a blast, no pun intended. Hope to see you all out there. On the pending council items, we just added PPMC to the agenda today for June sixteenth. You should see their presentation on the strategic plan in an effort to finalize that year-long effort, helping to set our community goals for the next three or four years. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you. All right, we're going to finish up council members' reports. Kevin?
I don't think I have anything tonight.
All right. Jeff?
I just want to reiterate the appreciation for Public Works and all that they do and everybody's work on the budgets. I know that's kind of crunch time and hopefully we'll get some good numbers and can move forward with some of the wants and needs that we see coming up for the next year. And I guess that's it. I did, I actually know the guy who we're contracting with to do the fireworks and he is super excited about coming back to Maze. He has more than forty shows between now and the fourth, and so he is great guns. He is also the one who is bidding out to do OU. He already does K-State. They're looking at KU and doing stuff for the Chiefs. So they are getting pretty big, that victory pyrotechnic. So it should be a really good show. I'm excited to bring that back in, in the community.
Doctor?
I just, again, want to encourage everyone to complete that budget simulation for the Saver County. It will end on May twenty-third. So, yeah, I appreciate that. Again, that's a project I have the county to do. It's a good opportunity to provide the input. I think if, we'll see how it goes with the county maybe next year or in a couple of years, we can introduce that.
I would echo the thank you to Public Works and see you all on Thursday. I would also, going back to our meeting with, our joint meeting with USD two-six-six Board of Education and City Council, I know we had some good discussions on sidewalks and whatnot there. I, I do think there was a couple times during the meeting that they had asked the city what our budget was for sidewalks and we didn't have a real clear answer for that, although I do know it is one of our priorities. It might be good to try to square up an answer there and maybe even delineate in the budget some funds that are set aside just for that purpose so they don't get washed in with everything else that we have to prioritize across the city. So I thought it was a fair question that they're posing back to us. Other than that, thank you, everyone. I know everybody's working hard, so.
Mayor Report, the fireworks thing, I am so happy that, you know, you guys all know I'm all about quality of life and, and I'm glad that we're doing that again. It's been a long time since we've done that, so I'm happy we're doing that. That goes all the way back to Claire. Used to do that. He did everything around here, I think, but I'm happy we're doing that, so. What else do I have? Also, the concerts, you guys know I want to use the amphitheater, so Tristan, thank you for all those things. The strategic plan, we, we had another meeting on that today. I think we're really getting really close on that. I want to thank everybody for working on that. That, that's a game changer for everybody, so. Other than that, I think that's it. We're not having an executive, right?
Sir, unless you want one.
I don't want.
Okay.
You should give David?
David went.
No, you did.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
This was out of order.